Good evening, everyone. I'm Don Mackey, the LCAT director, and I am the moderator for this forum.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. I'm the moderator for this forum presented to inform residents and voters about the respective concerns, positions, and priorities of the two candidates seeking a seat on the East Long Meadow School Committee. Sarah Trullio is the incumbent member up for reelection. Amy Delenta is the challenger. Welcome to both of you. Both have been campaigning actively around town, door to door, as well as online. They have comprehensive information available on their respective Facebook and webpages about themselves, their experience in education, their policies and positions. And we encourage anyone tuning in to our live stream right now to make a point to learn more from those and other sources. Tonight's forum is an opportunity for each candidate to respond to questions posed by members of the public, submitted by email over the past week or so, and covering a pretty comprehensive list of topics. With only minor changes for consistency, clarity, the questions which I have seen, which only I have seen, only I've seen these questions, will be asked as they were submitted. There were three instances of essentially duplicate questions, so those have been consolidated, obviously, into one. But in every other respect, the questions will speak for themselves and reflect the range of perspectives in the community that in large part define the particular challenge of serving on a local school board. The order of opening statements has been determined just a few minutes ago by a coin toss. And from there, each new question will alternate following that order. The opening statements will be limited to one and a half minutes for each candidate, and then we'll move to the questions. So I just want to say, as the goal is as much substantive discussion as possible, answers will be allowed for up to two minutes if that's necessary. And we have a timekeeper standing by who will signal me if and when the time limit is approaching. And the candidates will, of course, be allowed to finish any answer. The forum is streaming right now live on LCAT's YouTube channel, LCAT 01028, where it will be archived for viewing later. And a recording of the program will be posted tomorrow on LCAT's cable channels. So I think we're ready for the opening statements. So based on the coin toss, I'll ask Amy Delenta to begin.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you, Don, your entire team at LCAT, for the opportunity to participate in this forum this evening. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Trullio. Residents of East Long Meadow, my name is Amy Delenta, and I am here tonight to demonstrate to you why I will be a valuable addition to your school committee. My hope is that at the end of this evening, you will have a clear understanding of my dedication to this town, to its children in future, and to the continued improvement of the education we offer in East Long Meadow. I am a mother to three school-aged children. I'm a published researcher and a college professor with a doctorate in education. I started my career as a public school teacher, and I've spent the past 16 years working in a variety of educational settings, each of which has led me to this juncture. Tonight, you will hear about my values, such as my commitment to listening and collaborating with the citizens of the town. You will hear about my extensive background in education and how this will translate into my work on the school committee. You will see my disposition on full display and have a front row seat to my willingness to be humbled. You will see that I have a knowledge and the willingness to advocate for your children, as well as the character traits necessary to collaborate, learn, and adapt for the greater good of the people living in this community. Most importantly tonight, you will see that I am running for school committee not against an opponent, but for children, families, and schools. I look forward to our dialogue, and I look forward to getting to know you. And I thank you all for the opportunity to serve you.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Sarah, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to start likewise by extending a thank you to Don Mackey and everyone at LCAT for ensuring that this candidate's forum was able to occur. A thank you to my opponent for agreeing to discuss key topics from the community this evening. Additionally, I want to take a moment to thank the individuals who actually submitted questions tonight. I appreciate that you took the time to do so as it speaks to the commitment we as a community have to the education of our children in this town. And finally, I want to thank you to each member of the community that is either watching live or who is going to choose to watch later on. Our children are lucky to be in a town that places such a high regard on educational opportunities. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sarah Trullio, and I am currently seeking reelection on the school committee. I'm currently at the end of my first term, and I've been honored to serve as your vice chair for the last two years. My goal tonight is to ensure that I speak to the student-centered approach to decision-making that has guided not just my first term on the committee, but that has spanned my nearly two-decade career in public education. This upcoming year will mark my 17th year in a public school system. I have been a classroom teacher, a building-based math instructional coach, a district-level administrator, and I currently work as the director of mathematics, where I oversee the daily curriculum, instruction, assessment, and PD for nearly 60 schools. My commitment to students, my belief that educators are a critical factor in ensuring their success in school, has always remained unwavering regardless of the position that I have found myself. Tonight, I hope to showcase that the decisions I have made on the committee over the past three years were grounded in balancing the desire for students to be at the forefront, but also in balancing the needs of our constituents. There's much to be proud of and celebrate over the last three years. Our acceptance into the MSBA program for the high school project, our work to ensure that each child in this community had access to an iPad or a Google Chromebook, and our pursuit of a balanced budget that balances the needs of students and the needs of taxpayers. And I would be remiss if I did not mention the outstanding achievements of our students, educators, and administrators over the past three years. East Long Meadow has been my home for nearly a decade now. I am proud to raise my family here, serve as an elected official, a volunteer within the rec department as a coach, and the schools. And above all, to live in a community that recognizes the power that educational opportunities provide our children. I hope that tonight I am able to share not only my accomplishments and our community accomplishments, but my vision for the future of the LPS so that I can work to earn your vote again on Juneteenth. Thank you. You're muted, Don. Famous saying.
You know what? It's fun that somebody else gets to say that besides me. Thank you. I knew that was going to happen when I clicked that. All right. So on to the questions. They've been organized somewhat by topic. The first of which is roles and responsibilities of a school committee member. And the first is a two-part question about state law and district policy. So Amy Delenta has the first opportunity to respond. And the first question is, "Explain your understanding of the requirements for elected and appointed municipal officials with respect to (a) the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest Law and (b) the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law as it relates to school committee policies regarding public comment and input from the public during meetings."
So as you all know, this is my very first run for an elected office. So I have an understanding that as an elected official, I am going to be responsible to communicate with members of the public, as well as members of both the school committee and the other committees in town to assure that we are acting in the best interest of all the constituents of this town. With that being said, because I will be a newly elected person to this position, I will have much to learn regarding the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest Law that you refer to. I assume that someone who's been serving in this type of position would be able to obviously answer that question very well. But I will, I will state that those particular intricate questions will be matters that I will be willing to learn, and I'm a very quick study.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Sarah?
Thank you. So just to clarify, it was conflict of interest? And then the second part of that question was relative to public comment during our meetings?
Yes, the open meeting law and relative to public comment.
Okay.
And public participation during the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So in terms of conflict of interest, the state has put forth quite a comprehensive conflict of interest program that as a member for my current place of employment, I am required to participate in. That goes over a myriad of different potential situations that you can find yourself in, whether it be the amount of the donation you can take since you are a public employee, to the types of conversations you can engage in, to the types of votes you're able to take based on your relationships with individuals or based on your relationships with certain entities. So for instance, at one point, I was abstaining from a vote on the school committee because in my place of employment, I was already in a contract with one of the vendors that we were seeking to pursue a contract with here in town. So I did not think it was ethically responsible of me to then also vote on a contract that I was already a part of as a function of my employment. So that was one instance in which I did recognize that conflict of interest and act on it. In terms of public comment, we ensure that we allow opportunities for visitors to speak at the beginning of every meeting. We ensure that they are allowed opportunities to address us directly. We are not meant to engage in a conversation during that time, which I know particularly during the pandemic became frustrating because it was not necessarily always clear that that was the intent of public comment at the onset of our meetings. We are meant to ascribe to approximately three minutes per individual who speaks. But we've tried to really ensure, especially during times where the conversations were extremely critical, that we laxed that and gave everybody the opportunity to speak and really share their concerns without a time limit, similar to the function that John is providing to us tonight so that the issues at hand can be addressed and heard in as comprehensive a way as possible. And I think lastly, I would add that we are really not allowed as school committee members to engage in conversations relative to the topics on our agenda in large groups. Once there's three of us together having a conversation, that's considered a quorum. And then that can lead to decisions potentially being perceived as being made. So we are very cognizant of those mass general laws, and we ensure that we ascribe to them so that we're really being respectful of the process of being an elected or the position of being an elected official, but also to ensure that we don't bring any kind of damage or a bad reputation to our town in terms of how we conduct ourselves in the business of running a school department.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So as you know, another responsibility of the school committee is to develop, approve, and submit to the town manager an annual operating budget for the district. So that moves us to a number of questions related to budget and finance. So, Ms. Delenta, as a school committee member, what factors would you consider in determining your budget priorities? Where would you look to make budget cuts if they were needed? And are there areas where you would not consider making any cuts? And I can repeat those if you want me to.
Please do. Am I answering first this time?
You are answering first, yes. Oh, thank you. No, we're flipping. So that question, I apologize. Yes, you're right. That question goes to Sarah first.
Do you mind just repeating it? Don, sorry about that.
Not at all. Yeah. So that, if you can help me with that, because I'm going to lose track. All right. As a school committee member, what factors would you consider in determining your budget priorities? Where would you look to make budget cuts if they were needed? And are there any areas where you would not consider making cuts?
There are a host of factors that I consider when looking at the budget. One is ensuring that we're looking at data and ensuring that we're looking at the data in terms of revenue coming into the town, but we're looking at the data in terms of the needs of our students and our educators. So we want to make sure that we have delineated funds to address those, but that we aren't also placing a burden on the town in terms of the amount of funds that we're requesting. So we want to ensure that we are really balancing both needs, the needs of the taxpayers, but the needs of our students first and foremost. In terms of cuts, I mean, I am a staunch advocate to ensure that kids always have access to what they need. So I would try, and I have tried, to make sure that whatever cuts we've had to make are not directly impacting students. Sometimes the cuts and the requests that come forth are so large that it's hard to not have an impact financially on our students. We saw that last year. We were asked to cut back on our operating budget, and we were not able to either fill or replace positions, the five positions. We actually had to not rehire or hire individuals into those. And that directly had an impact on students. And it was not something that any member of the committee was really excited about or happy to do, but it was necessary in order to strike that balance. I think the schools have risen to the occasion and have ensured that there hasn't been any missteps in terms of the continuity of programming that we've offered students. But we don't want to see that become a pattern as we move forward. And I think as we continue to think forward about the budget, we're fortunate that we have some grants that are coming in, both from the state and the federal level. But we have to be really careful how we spend those based on the needs of our students.
Thank you. All right, Amy.
I believe that, again, this is a real comprehensive picture of not only the needs of the town and the greater picture of the individuals living in this town, but also obviously as a school committee member, really honing in and drilling down and looking at the needs of the students. So as it pertains to budget, first and foremost, it's always going to be about the students. Making cuts or reductions is not something that is ever preferable. If there has to be reductions made, as is being suggested this year, it's going to be necessary to be very creative. What that looks like, I'm not so sure because those discussions would happen collaboratively, and some hard decisions might possibly have to be made. But the bottom line is, if there are reductions, we know that our students, we know that our students might have to feel that. So first and foremost, if one of the questions was, what would you not be willing to cut? Of course, you never want to cut personnel. You never want to have to reduce the number of teachers in the district. That would be something that's an absolute priority. But we're also looking at the bigger picture here and making sure that we have a very balanced approach and a fair approach and something that, as we look down the road, is going to balance out.
All right. Thank you very much. So question three, and this will go to you, Amy, if I'm correct. Question three is a two-part question, and it follows somewhat from the prior question. As a school committee member, do you feel you have a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers of East Long Meadow? And what does financial transparency mean to you considering the generous relief, both state and federal, that will flow into the district for the next year?
Well, as a school committee member, of course, you have a fiscal responsibility to the town. The school department is in charge of an enormous part of the town budget, and it's important to be obviously very transparent, very open in taking that responsibility very seriously. So the fiscal responsibility is to not only the school committee and the people who are directly impacted by issues pertaining to the school, but also to the entire town. Don, could you repeat the second part of that question?
Absolutely. Sure. What does fiscal, financial transparency, I'm sorry, financial transparency mean to you considering the generous relief, both state and federal, that will flow into the district for the next year?
To me, that looks like communication and being accountable to the public, be that through meetings such as the recorded town council and school committee meetings, be that through an openness to communicate with constituents and with honesty and transparency. That, to me, just looks like communication that is publicly visible, where we are providing data to the people of East Long Meadow to be extremely accountable for every dollar that is spent within the school committee budget.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So we definitely have, as Amy just mentioned, a responsibility to the taxpayers and to ensure that we're operating in a way that is responsible financially in terms of the budget for both the school committee and ensuring that we're expending those funds for the actual school department, but that as a larger function of the town, that we're continuing to be responsible in relationship to how our budget impacts the entire town's budget. Financial transparency, I think, is something that as a committee, this past year in particular, we have really strived to be. We have been forthcoming at our meetings to discuss the ways in which we have spent our S R funds. We've been forthcoming in terms of saying which grants we've already expended based on the need to expend them, based on the regulations that have been placed around them. We have a tremendous assistant superintendent of business who consistently provides reporting on our budget by each quarter. We have met with the financial oversight committee. We provided documentation to them. We have had open discussions that are all on film for any individual who wants to pursue that further, to look and see how we have begun to expend our funds. And we continue to work with the town manager and are seeking to continue to work and will continue to work with the town council this coming Tuesday to further discuss the school department's budget and the potential cuts that are coming to it. You know, I think what we need to continue to strive for is to recognize that the school department does not operate independent of itself. We have a locus of control, but we also operate within a much larger community. And we need to ensure that as a town, the processes and procedures that really are in place to ensure that all departments are meeting the requirements set forth by the town manager in terms of our budgets are being done in a way that is honest and open and that are allowing each department to actually strike what the aim is for the next fiscal year. It's hard to chase a target that moves. So we really want to ensure that as we, as a department grow and as a school committee grow, that we as a community are seeking that same level of transparency and that we're ensuring that we have the best information and that we're having those conversations and that mutual respect for what each of the departments is trying to do. So I think that communication, the openness of us to provide documentation whenever asked, and our consistent work to ensure that our budget is at the forefront. The budget for a school department is one of the most critical factors for ensuring high levels of student achievement and ensuring that taxpayers understand why the money is there and what it's being used for. And we need to ensure that we are doing that day in and day out as a member of the school committee.
Thank you. So question four asks that you each elaborate somewhat related on your understanding, maybe in a little bit more detail, of the way the state and town respectively fund local education and the impact, in particular, of enrollment in the funding recommendations for FY 2022.
I'm up.
Yep, you're up.
Yes. So I mean, right now, we are faced with potential budget cuts. And I know that there's information out in the community that's relative, or at least trying to paint the picture that that's directly related to a decrease in enrollment. And that's not necessarily true, or it's not true. The potential budget cuts are linked to the financial oversight committee making recommendations to the town council to not provide a level services budget to the schools. And the level services budget was placed on the school committee at the request of the town manager. First and foremost, as a committee, we have committed to continue to engage in conversations with the town council so that we are not in a situation to actually face that financial shortfall for our students. Myself and the chair fully intend to engage with the town council during Tuesday evening's public budget meeting. So we will be there to continue to advocate for the students. No matter what, we're one town, and we need to ensure that we are balancing the needs of students and taxpayers. But we all need to be aware, like I just mentioned, that there are shortcomings in our budget development process, and they need to be addressed so that we're not getting ourselves into this position year after year. We need to ensure that we have really transparent communication and transparent expectations for each department so we can continue to move forward and budget appropriately. Because without clear parameters, we get ourselves in a tough situation. You know, we cannot continue to chase targets that were not made explicitly clear to us as members of the committee. But back to the reduction in enrollment, we did see students begin to leave our community, especially during the pandemic. We saw roughly 150 students who unenrolled. But you know, as of today and as of my conversations as a member of the committee, we've already re-enrolled 45 students back. And that's roughly 25%, which speaks to the positive trend in May that we're already seeing based on the decisions of the public school systems and our school committee. Additionally, we've had 19 additional students enroll. So our enrollment from where it was, being down 170 students, 150 students, is already up 37%. So to say that the budget cuts are directly related to student enrollment without having all of the information is not necessarily in the best interest of our community in terms of being transparent. Secondly, I think if you're going to link enrollment to budget reductions, then we should see the same thing from our town. If we're seeing spikes in our enrollment, then over the past 10 years, we should have seen spikes in our funding. And we haven't. Our budget for the past roughly decade has hovered right around 2%, 2.25% increases, which is really just meeting level services, which is really just meeting what we are contractually obligated to provide students. It's not helping our district move forward. It's keeping us exactly where we are. And that's a broader conversation that I think the community needs to be aware of. If all we're doing is maintaining the status quo, then we're not necessarily providing a better educational opportunity year after year. We're very, very fortunate that we have things like ELEF in place and strong PTOs and creative budgeting practices and federal and state grants that support our schools. But the bottom line is, we're still fifth in the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Council in terms of educational funding. And we need to do better. And yes, this money that we're getting from state and local grant, or state and federal grants, is going to help, but it's temporary. And we've had a strong commitment to education, and we need to keep that strong commitment to education going by making sure that we are matching it with financial dollars.
All right. Thanks. Amy? So I can just sort of recap, or you want me to recap what that question was? Because that was a while ago.
Sure.
But what's your understanding of the school's budget and how it's funded from the town and the state and the relationship with enrollment in that formula?
So right now, we're obviously at a very complicated time. We've just walked together through pandemic and have experienced a lot of unrest on the fiscal side due to that. And so that's an obvious, that's an obvious underpinning of everything that we're sort of discussing tonight. So as it pertains to the potential reduction in the budget as of right now, and I know you've asked me to speak about the town and the state funding, the one thing that does concern me in terms of the number of students. So I spoke with a member of the town council, and I was told that the proposed budget that they have, you know, the oversight committee came back with was directly related in part to the reduced enrollment here in East Long Meadow. So if I'm not saying fully, I'm saying direct in part. So I agree with Mrs. Trullio that thus, you know, in years where we have elevated enrollment, we should be seeing more money, right? But my concern about the numbers, the approximately 160 students who have left us, you know, between pre-pandemic and now, is that I would like to have seen a moment where we would have been able to gather some preemptive data to be able to share, you know, weeks ago, maybe even a month ago, with the oversight committee, the town council, and say, hey, you know, we know that 160 students are not with us right now, but we've gathered some preemptive data from the families, and we know that, you know, 45 or 100 are going to be coming back. And so that communication and that collaboration in a preemptive way might have at least helped a little bit to deepen the discussion, to further the collaboration so that perhaps the budget constrictions that have been placed on the school department as of right now possibly wouldn't have felt so drastic.
Don, is the rule still in place that I can offer a short rebuttal?
Yes, we haven't had any rebuttals up until now, but...
It's more a point of clarification. That's okay.
If it's clarification, sure.
Yes. So just to speak to Amy's point, during the town financial oversight committee's meeting that myself and the chair and the superintendent and the assistant superintendent were invited to, we did speak to enrollment, and we used the NESDEC, which is the New England School Development Council projections, to speak to the 10-year projection that we have available to us that shows that between now and 2030, we're looking at less than 1% fewer students enrolling in East Long Meadow schools, which is roughly 25 students. So we are holding steady at about 2,400 students based on the projections that we've received from this agency, and that's projected into 2030. So those projections were shared. I just wanted to make sure that that information was out there for the public.
All right. Great. Thank you. So this next question is related, you'll see, directly. Do you think the decision of the school committee to stay fully remote negatively impacted enrollment? And was that considered as a ramification when that vote was being taken? Amy?
I think that the decision to remain remote did directly impact the decreased enrollment that we're experiencing right now. I believe however, that at the time, the school committee worked together to make the best decision that they could for our town. Based on the myriad of factors that played into that decision. It like has been mentioned this evening was a moving target. So yes. Um, regretfully, some families did, did suffer from that decision. We all suffered together and, and, and continue to in certain ways because of issues that arose from the pandemic. Um, and so it was um, expected that families who were. Feeling that they needed their students to be experiencing school in person, needed to withdraw from the East Long Meadow schools at that time. It was very regrettable. Obviously, that's not what anybody in the town wanted, but it did happen. So our obvious hope. Would be to bring those students back as our lives return to normal. But um, just to be clear, the, I, I truly do believe that we are working together as a town. We're not looking backwards and casting blame. We are looking forward. So the decision that was made was made. Um, there was ramifications because of it, but we're here now looking forward.
Thank you. Sarah?
So similarly, I, I do think that the decision to stay remote impacted the decisions that families had to make in relation to choosing to place their students in a different learning environment. Um, was it a factor in our decision-making? Of course, it weighs in, but at the time, we also needed to look at. At other factors. We need to consider health data that was being presented and the readiness of our schools to open in either a hybrid or a fully um. Or a fully open model such as furniture and webcams and ensuring that we had the proper staff in place that we could. Weather the storm of, of being open and. I fully respect the decisions that each family had to make relative to the pandemic. Our goal as a community, as a committee member is always to strive to provide a learning environment that meets the needs of all of our students and. And our families. But of course, over the last year, it, it wasn't necessarily possible to do that and. I remain hopeful that as this year continues to move forward. Um, and next academic year begins to unfold, that we'll be able to demonstrate to families our desire to bring them back. And I think that the positive trends in data are already beginning to showcase that. They're already beginning to showcase that families want to be here and that our willingness as a community and as a committee. To ensure that the educational experiences we provide, not only for the remainder of this year, but the launch of next academic year, will draw families back in. But, but yes, I do think it was, it was linked um, to, to that decision back then.
All right, thanks very much. So there's one final question and it, it may seem a little bit repetitive, so I'll use it, I guess, as an opportunity to uh. Or to give you the opportunity to sort of follow up if you have any thought about this particular issue. So the, the question as submitted was if cuts in school staff do in fact become necessary. Do you think those positions should be administrators or teachers?
I'm up for this one, right?
You're up for that. Sorry, yes, thank you.
Um, so I again am going to reiterate that I remain incredibly hopeful that we do not have to come to this juncture. And remain steadfast in my commitment and the commitment of the committee, but also the chair. To continue to advocate on Tuesday, on Tuesday evening and to ensure that we can be as creative and collaborative as possible. To ensure that our students do not have to deal with the financial ramifications of a budget shortfall. However, um, in the event that we do face a reduction. I think we need to look at, at, at staff at this point and, and not administration. And I say that because. Currently, each one of our buildings has between one and two administrators. Um, we're already operating um, with only two out of three administrators in place at the high school. As a result of reduction to our staff or to our budget last year. So one of our creative measures in terms of not being able to have that directly impact students. Was to not actually fill the vacated position at the high school. So already they're down a third. Of their administrative staff in what is sure to be an additional year like no other. Um, when you look at Meadow Brook, we have a principal, an acting principal in place. And then we also have um, a retired principal who's offering support there. We are not fully staffed. So to place more burdens on the administrators who right now are, are dealing with staffing issues and trying to ensure that buildings remain open. And remain positive places that are safe for students to engage in both social learning but academic learning. I don't think that that's possible unfortunately for next year. Um, I would, I would unfortunately have to say that we'd have to look at staff and, and not administrators because. Um, we're already operating with a very lean administrative staff. And we're still trying to move the educational focus of our schools forward. Education and opportunities have not stopped in East Long Meadow. We've continued to push our students and our educators forward. Because we know that's what our kids deserve regardless of circumstance. So in order to, to do that, we need to look creatively and considering possibly not hiring in the event of a retirement for um, an actual staff position. But our administrative staffs are extremely lean at this point in time.
Thank you. Amy?
I also remain hopeful that there will still be some work to do. Um, looking very closely at how we can recalibrate some things within that budget. And I obviously know that there are some very important conversations yet to be had regarding that. So I remain hopeful that the collaboration, the communication can be again, very, very strong regarding those issues and really helping. Um, helping the Town Council, helping members of the community who might not be directly related to the schools. Gain a comprehensive understanding of what it looks like to reduce funding. What it looks like in the classroom could be larger class sizes. What it look, what it could potentially look like in the classroom is a child not getting taken out for a special um, service that they need. For example, a social emotional um, support group. So it has, you know, we're, we look at numbers and we were looking, we're talking this whole entire time thus far about the budget and the numbers. And of course, it's important, it's critical. But we are talking about how this impacts children. This impacts children and teachers every single day. And so the notion of not being able to come back up to a level funding situation, that's not preferable. If it does happen, the question was um, should administrators be cut or should teachers be cut? I'm just going to stay an optimist right now and say that let's not think about that yet. Until we absolutely have to cross that bridge because none should be cut. We are moving forward in this town. When I spoke to one of the administrators about the budget issues and the potential for some real need to get creative. Um, this particular person said, you know, we could, in, you know, a pie in the sky kind of wish, we could go ten percent every single year. Obviously, that's not something that's going to happen, but the point is, as Mrs. Trilio mentioned, we are moving forward. We are trying to provide the students of this town the absolute best education possible. As it stands right now. In our per people spending, if you look at the surrounding communities, we're, we're towards the bottom. Is that what we want for our students? Do we want to think about it that way? I would argue that no, right now we need to think really creatively, be extremely collaborative. And work towards getting something in place that can be very competitive with our surrounding communities.
Thanks very much. All right, this is a little bit of a change. It's still, I guess, financially related somewhat. And so this goes to Amy. Uh, if elected, how would you make an impact on the new high school project quickly?
Uh, we're going to do a big bake sale. That's what we're going to do. I'm just kidding. Um, so as we know, as we all know, this is not a, this is not a quick process. The school committee, I believe, has been very transparent and very informative in explaining to us that this process is not just something. That we jump into and slide through in a cavalier way. This is obviously going to have a tremendous financial impact on the town as we proceed. Through the process of looking at, you know, in, from every angle, what it's going to take for this town to move forward. With the high school project. So quickly. I wish that we could all just wave a magic wand and say that something could happen quickly, but you know, obviously. We need to be realistic as well. This is not something that's going to happen overnight. This is likely not even something that's going to happen within the next couple of years. And that's just due to the nature of the process. That's not somebody's fault. The school committee has been working tirelessly on this for years. So I believe that patience is going to serve us well in the long run. There's a, there's going to be a lot of collaboration going on as we, as we enter, you know. Um, Superintendent Smith has been so informative with the general public in keeping everybody. Up to speed on where, on where we are in this process. So quickly, no. But looking with a long gaze, yes, and I have, I have great hope and. Do believe that we, we are going to be able to get that project done. You know, we look at the surrounding communities. And the high schools in our surrounding towns are, they're, they're just, they're beacons in those towns. Um, you look at Long Meadow, you look at Menachem, the people, they're not just for the people that attend that school. They're not just for the schools and for the um, teachers and, and the students. They're for everyone in that town. They're a point of pride. And I really do, I, I know that we are moving in the direction of making it so East Long Meadow High School. Will continue to be a point of pride, but that it'll be physically, you will look at the building itself and, and feel. Um, extremely proud of how far we've come.
Thank you. Right, Sarah?
Thank you. So, so much of the work and much, many of the timelines are not actually delineated by the school committee itself. Um, most of those timelines are delineated through the state and through the MSBA process. So we have certain time requirements and certain um, expectations that are placed on us. And I'm happy to report that as of right now, we've submitted seven out of our eight target requirements um, for this current period of time. In fact, oftentimes um, the MSB doesn't necessarily want documentation ahead of their given deadlines. Because we are one of many who are involved in this process. Um, I'm thrilled that we have began, that we've partnered with the Town Council in terms of funding the feasibility study. I, I mentioned at our last school community, school committee meeting that speaks to a broader consensus um, amongst departments, but also across our community. Um, you know, the eligible, the eligible reimbursement rate is still hovering around fifty-five to fifty-seven percent. Which is terrific in terms of us continuing to engage and inform our community. In relation to the financial burden that we will have to assume um, if we choose to move forward with our project. Um, and also just as, as a side note, the MSBA does use enrollment projections and the ones that I mentioned before are what they specifically look to in terms of. What does our enrollment look like for the next decade? And we're very fortunate that we're hovering right around two thousand four hundred students. Um, in terms of immediate impact, we do have a committee that's been established that was one of the targets that we were required by the MSBA. To um, to hit during this, during this phase of our eligibility. Um, that committee is a diverse community, a committee that includes members of our community, members of our school committee, members of other departments and other elected um, officials. Um, but I think what we need to continue to do right now, so this process continues to function in a smooth and efficient fashion. Is we need to continue to educate our community about the, the positive aspects, but the financial aspects of this work as we go forward because. We don't want to come to a, a crossroads where we have to make a decision as a town and a vote is put on us as a community. And we haven't done our due diligence to inform the community as to the impacts. Um, and that really has to be the next course of action is broad knowledge, broad understanding. About um, what that vote will entail. Um, so that we can really ensure that we move expeditiously and continue to move efficiently through the process. Um, and you know, just as an aside, other committees will continue to be established. So I encourage the community to stay attuned to that. I've been fortunate that in um. In my current position, I've actually sat in on some of those committees and really been able to inform. What's our, what buildings look like and how they can be super responsive to the needs of students and super responsive to the needs of educators. And community needs to weigh in on that and will be invited to as the process moves forward. So I think education and um, in, in ensuring that everyone has all the information so that when the vote comes. Or when the committees are formed, um, the town feels like they have some skin in the game and that they really are able to um, engage with, with the work.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, so now we're going to move into some questions uh, that cover more policymaking issues, curriculum and educational priorities. And so the next one, this goes to you, Sarah. Um, and honestly, the timing of these questions, I mean, they only came in in the past week, but boy, the, the rate of. Change at the state level in terms of where we are with respect to COVID has been like lightning. So I, I, I'll ask the question because somebody took the time to submit it. Um, but what is your position on a full return to in-person learning for the fall of twenty twenty-one?
Sure. So um, you know, as part of, as part of my, my job, my day-to-day job, I, I am often reviewing um, memos and correspondence from the Commissioner of Education and. Um, you know, the commissioner has been steadfast going back to, I believe as early as April to say that. His guidance for next year is that we open um, across the Commonwealth um, in the fall of twenty twenty-one with a full in-person um. With a full in-person return for all grades um, at the onset of the academic year. So in that same memo, he also was um, really clear that districts do not necessarily need to. Offer um, remote instruction for, for individuals, but that districts need to be steadfast in terms of providing guidance and providing um. Inputs to families who need to keep their child home potentially for medical reasons. And that, I think that that's something as a community and as a committee will continue to listen and continue to hear from families who might find themselves in that particular situation. But um, to that point, um, the commissioner is, is, that's the decision that he has made and I believe that is a decision our community has, has made as well. Um, but to the point around um, remote learning, there are definitely virtual schools that exist. Just since this is also an opportunity to educate the community, we have two um, virtual schools that exist within the Commonwealth. So as families start to think forward to next year, um, there are two that are, are operational, operationalized statewide. And um, as we continue to pursue full in-person instruction, just want families to know that there are virtual options um, that also exist within the Commonwealth.
All right, thank you. Amy?
So I will echo that my stance on a full return to in-person learning in the fall of twenty twenty-one is favorable. And it's really based on the recommendations that are coming down to us from the top. So we're obviously looking at what the Commissioner of Education is recommending. We are, all the good people in this town that are responsible for the public health decisions are going to also be making their recommendations. So I do believe that we're all, many people in this town are really looking forward to a full return in the fall of twenty twenty-one. With that being said, I do also agree that there are going to be some situations. Um, in, within families for medical reasons or what have you, that students do need to have a remote option still on the table. This is going to be something um, that we will continue to see, possibly for years to come, who knows? I do believe that we are at a juncture right now in education. Um, that really serves to. Um, that really serves to. Help us make a big decision about what direction we want to go. So we, we could stay stuck and say, nope, we're going to only offer forevermore in-person learning. Or we can say, this is a time where we can rise and meet the moment, not just East Long Meadow, but as Mrs. Trilio mentioned. There are, um, there are several schools that are options for students to attend online here in Massachusetts. And they are free public schools that are just, that just happen to be virtual. So this is important information for families, but it's also important for East Long Meadow in particular. To really think about what we want those virtual offerings to look like in the fall and to, and to make a commitment that we are. Willing and able to change with the times. Maybe there, maybe there's always going to be an option. Um, in the, in the coming years for students to access learning remotely, virtually. If they need to medically. So these are all things that um, I, I believe in beyond just the, the fall of twenty twenty-one.
All right, thank you. Um, so then this goes back to you, Amy. Are you familiar with the social media policies which guide elected and appointed officials and employees of the town of East Long Meadow? Including East Long Meadow Public Schools? And what is your position on what social media limitations, if any, should be in place for public employees?
Well, I am aware of the um, acceptable internet use policy as it pertains to the whole district. I'm also aware that within the um, the teacher's contract, there is a professional behavior. Um, guidance in, within the teacher's contract. So my, my take on social media as it pertains to teachers, was that the specific question, Don?
Uh, well, teachers and town employees. I mean, the town, the town has it and, and I believe that the schools has a parallel policy.
Okay. Um, so I, I'm a teacher educator. I train the future teachers. And this, this conversation of professionalism is something that comes up in my classrooms all the time when we're talking about. Individuals that are representing, um, that are representing a town. Um, and so this is obviously of critical importance as it pertains, I, I won't speak to how it pertains overall to all public employees. That's not um, my jurisdiction whatsoever, but I can speak to what, how it pertains directly to. Um, the educators and the wonderful, um, you know, staff that are also working within this district. So I do believe that it's, it's, it's to be followed in terms of the contractual obligations for professional ethics. Uh, teachers should be allowed to have social media um, if they so choose and, and. Teachers should be allowed to have social media if they so choose and other town employees should be allowed to have social media. But also having that bigger picture of they are representing a town. So what I tell my students is you have to keep in mind that what you put on social media might be seen by your students, might be seen by the parents that you serve. So those are all things that I have in my mind, but absolutely, I think that when we hire teachers in this town, we hire them and we tell them that we trust them. We tell them that we trust their ethical judgment. We tell them that we trust who they are as professionals and thus they should be absolutely able to have social media if they so choose, but also to be aware through their contract and other, you know, other pieces of that puzzle that they are representing East Long Meadow and trusting them to do so.
All right. Thank you. Sarah?
So I've, I've talked about the social media policy quite, quite a bit during our committee meetings. I do believe our policy is out of date. It references quite a few things such as websites and, and archaic in this day and age of forms of social media. It's not relevant to the types of social media interactions that we see currently. So therefore it does need to be updated. And currently we are continuing to engage in negotiations with the ELEA, which is the local bargaining union that represents the teachers in this community. And my hope is that the, the current policy is also part of those, those bargaining conversations. I'm not the point person directly from, from the school committee, but we continue to receive updates and I'm hopeful that as that contract moves forward, that we'll continue to see strides made in, in the current policy so that it, it reflects what it needs to reflect based on the times that we're in. I believe there is a balance that needs to be struck between protecting the First Amendment rights of our educators because they do undoubtedly have a right to freedom of speech. However, based on the positions that they hold within our community, we also need to ensure that the interactions on social media don't fracture relationships with students and don't fracture relationships with families. And we need to strike that balance in a way that is inclusive and that ensures that it remains respectful and that we offer, offer families, don't leave families feeling that they're being pushed away based on, on individuals' profiles or individuals' comments. I remain hopeful that the final version will respect our educators, but will also provide assurances for families that their students are engaging in appropriate and professional relationships, whether it's on social media or in the classroom with their students. And that we're portraying our district in a way that's positive and that we're not looking to push families away, but seeking to use social media as a means of bringing families in and fostering positive relationships. So I'm eager to see what the final version that is brought forth to the school committee to vote on, because I hope it reflects some of what I've just described.
All right. Thanks very much. So now we're going to move to a couple of questions that, about, about yourselves actually and your professional experience. So question eleven goes first to Sarah. Aside from your education, what specific professional experiences do you have that will benefit the students of East Long Meadow and for how long did you hold these positions?
How long did I hold the positions outside of education or relative to education?
Aside from your own education?
Oh, okay, okay. So first and foremost, I've been employed by my current district, like I said, for sixteen years. I served as a teacher in that community for seven years. I then made a move at that point out of the elementary classroom to become an instructional coach at another elementary school where I spent two, two to three years there, two and a half probably before I was able to obtain my administrator's license. And after I left that coaching position where I was coaching teachers around their day-to-day instruction and helping them to improve their practice relative to math instruction, I was appointed to the supervisor position in the district where I work. In that role, I've, I've been, I served in that role for approximately five years. And upon some different shifts in our, in our structure, I was appointed to the acting role of director and then was able to obtain the director title last August. So over my sixteen years, I've, I've really had steady and incremental change in terms of the leadership opportunities that have been afforded to me based on my commitment to the students and the commitment to the educators that I had demonstrated, as well as my commitment to further my own education and the licenses I've been able to obtain. Even as of last week, I was able to obtain additional license. So now I'm a licensed assistant superintendent, superintendent. So my commitment to continuing to further my own personal educational experiences has had a direct impact on my capacity to impact my place of employment. And I've done so and demonstrated that leadership with that student-centered approach and my acknowledgement of the needs that educators have to ensure the needs of students are met for the past sixteen years. Relative to other experiences, some of them are volunteer and some of them have been professional, but you know, I, I've been a steadfast member of our community and have coached both professionally for a local high school, high school when I actually graduated, graduated grad school. And that has offered me the opportunities to learn about team building and relationship building and the desire to achieve and really striving to ensure that students, student athletes understand balance and the lifelong skills that being an athlete can really impart on a child. I'm going to throw parent in there as a job that I hold. I really, I really do think the needs of your child more often than not trump your own needs and that that really guides me, not only in my professional career in the district where I work, but in my professional career here in town as an elected official and needing to think about what the greater good is and what the greater need is and how you balance that is something that being a parent has definitely taught me as I took on that position. And I would say that being a public official is a position that I hold that is distinct from my educational career, being in the public light and balancing the needs of constituents and budgeting and the need to establish and maintain relationships with multiple departments and individuals on the committee, as well as other locally elected officials. All of that really has, has been a huge part of, of, of the work that I do and, and speaks to the commitment that I have and my capacity to collaborate and think creatively and manage multiple, multiple initiatives at the same time. And I think my experience where I work as, as a director of mathematics, as well as my coaching and, and being a parent and being a public official have kind of all led me to to being able to be the vice chair for the past two years and to really continue to try to be a steady hand as, as we continue to navigate education as it's, as it's never been before.
Thank you. All right, Amy. You want me to repeat anything? Yes. Aside from your education, what specific professional experiences do you have that would benefit the students of East Long Meadow and for how long did you hold these positions?
Well, I've been in the field of education ever since I graduated college. So I have been in this field since two thousand and five. I got my, I got my start as a classroom teacher, just like probably many of the people watching today. I, I started right out of college and I was a fifth grade teacher for several years. I transitioned out of the classroom when I began my family. So you're asking me to speak about my professional trajectory. But like Mrs. Trullio, I consider my role as a parent to have played an absolutely enormous role in my professional trajectory because it really determined my decision-making regarding my professional life. So I had all intentions of going back to the classroom and, and fulfilling, you know, fill, filling out the rest of my career in a classroom, but that's not how, that's not how it happened for me. What ended up happening was that as my family grew and then they started growing up, I slowly re-entered after several years of being home raising my children. I slowly re-entered back into the field and I did this by kind of keeping my, keeping myself current. So I, I served as a private tutor. I, I was doing programming for the recreation department. I was coaching youth sports. I was running the Christian education program at my church. I was during my, my years where I was in between and not exactly confident in which direction I was going to go, I was doing a whole bunch of different things all within the field of education because my heart's with children. I've always, ever since I was a young child, known that this is my career trajectory. After my children got a little bit older, I made the transition into higher education and really found a calling within that. So I went back to school. I earned my doctorate of education and I, I made the, I, I started transitioning to the role of a full-time faculty member within an education department. So that's, that happened for me. So one of the follow-ups to this, Don, was asking how long I've served in that role. So approximately, you know, for, I would say approximately seven to eight years, I have been in higher education in different capacities. So I have also had an upward trajectory in my career in higher education. I started, you know, eight or nine years ago as an adjunct professor. And then I moved forward from there. So then I became a full-time professor, also of education. And then I transitioned into a role as a department chair in my current position that I've held for just under two years. I served as the, the coordinator of that, of the education department. And so some of the things that I do are I oversee a team. I work on the curriculum planning and the trajectory of what the students, what the students' process looks like as they come into their college program. I oversee a substantial budget. I basically serve as the point person in my department for all things pertaining to the planning of courses, working with, working under state guidelines to help the teachers obtain their licensure. So for me, my trajectory in higher education has been for approximately eight years and the leadership role that I hold now is really propelling me forward and helping me to be prepared for a position on school committee.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, the next question, again, about your sort of personal professional experience. Share a time in your career when you had to make an unpopular decision. What was the issue? How did you arrive at the decision and how was it received by others? So that I think we stay with you, Amy.
I think for me, thinking about this question and how I, how I want to approach it, for me, unpopular decisions are typically unpopular or really difficult because they directly impact people. And so it's something that I'm very careful about in my everyday professional life, which is making decisions that are really people and human being focused. I have had to make several difficult decisions in my current position. Typically, they have to do with staffing or they have to do with students who are just not quite going to make it and graduate on time. And for me, whenever I have to make a difficult decision such as changing a staffing opportunity or telling a student they're not going to be able to quite make it to the finish line yet. The way that I operate through that is with compassion, with a lot of communication and with positivity. And when I encounter a difficult situation where I have to make an unpopular decision, doing so in a respectful way, allowing people to maintain their dignity is at the top of my priorities.
All right. Thanks. Sarah?
Sure. So I think, I think one decision that I have, I've made, and I'll go back to my work on the committee for this one, and one that I'm still, I'm still going to be continually asked to make going into this academic year is going to be relative to the school calendar. And that was a really difficult vote for myself to take last year, partly because any unpopular decision, anytime conversations around decision-making rise to the level of kind of being potentially polarized, it's because the stakes are high and emotions are high. And you know, I, I look to data, I look to communication, I look to listen and I look to think about, in this particular case, what was in the best interest of kids. So I know this is a conversation that's going to come back around. So I'll also use this as an opportunity to talk about, about the school calendar and, and how it continues to be a topic within our community because it is one that I think, our calendar is one of the key features that really allows us to maximize instruction. And when I was making that decision last year to not go along with, with the other members of the committee and actually deliver a navel on, on adopting our calendar, it was because I really had the best interest of students in mind. And when we think about the ten and a half days that we have and how we need to balance needs of professional development for educators, but also that those ten and a half days equate to five missed days of instruction for students, that's a very difficult decision to make. And again, I err on the side of, of really ensuring that students are receiving what they need and maximizing instructional minutes. And I think that that conversation is going to come back around. We have yet to approve our calendar for this year. And we've already, going into this academic year, the current one we're in, we were already at a loss of ten days based on the commissioner's decision. So our students lost ten instructional days this year, coupled with the half-day structure. So as we think forward to next academic year, I know it's going to continue to be a difficult conversation, probably an unpopular decision that I'm then going to have to make, but I will be led, led through that decision-making process by thinking about what is best for kids and how we really ensure that their needs are met first and that then we think about the ways we support educators to ensure that our students are receiving what they need. So I think leading with a creative approach, looking at data and a willingness to listen, but also to then act and make a decision that's in the best interest of the students is how I've, how I've guided myself out of that, that decision-making process last year.
All right. Thank you very much. So the next question goes then back to you, Sarah, and it, it speaks to communication. How do you plan to maintain close communication as a committee member with each school's administration, staff and students and improve communication with the public?
So over the past three years, I've made visits to schools. I have toured buildings. I have talked to individual administrators. I, I hope that they feel the same way that I feel that we have open lines of communication. We are able to email each other, able to communicate on the phone. We often collaborate on different, on different topics as we think about our meetings and we think about the ways that we want to present information to the community as a whole because it is, the committee, the committee is the recipients of information, but we also serve in collaboration on different subcommittees that we, that we serve on. So I think that in terms of working along staff and students and administrators, we do that as a function of our, of our roles within the actual committee. But you know, prior to the pandemic, I was also a room mom within the building. So I was also getting to interact with students, not only from my position as a committee member, but also as, as a volunteer and being able to interact with families in that way. I think, I think we need to continue to improve communication with the community. I think that there is a heightened sense of, of what our committee does that's been brought about by the current events. I think that there's a heightened sense of educational opportunities when they're, within our community. And I think that you know, over the past year and a half, I've, I've spoken on the phone with countless families. I have received text messages. I've received emails. And all of those forms of communication are not always present on, on our meetings, but they're occurring and, and they're occurring in really meaningful ways. So I would encourage individuals to continue to reach out to me, whether it's the email, my Facebook page, coming to the meetings and engaging with us as an entire committee during public comments. But also just to continue to, to reach out to your locally elected officials, like we are here to work in service of our constituents. And the more that we engage and the more that we have conversations, the better off we're going to be able to represent the multiple viewpoints within our committee or within our community, rather.
All right. Thank you. Amy?
So over the course of my campaign, I've really prided myself on the hundreds of conversations that I've been lucky enough and fortunate enough to have with many different people living in this town. So one of the things that I made a commitment to do was if elected to the school committee, I've made a commitment to having a forum similar to the one we're having right now, only allowing people kind of an informal space on a monthly basis to be able to catch up, to be able to talk in an informal way with me. And as Sarah mentioned earlier, you know, the, the school committee does meet an executive session. That's what, that's what they have to do. That is absolutely necessary. But I do believe that the town wasn't fully aware of that process. So people did feel at a point in time over this past year that they were being left out of conversations. Well, that wasn't necessarily true. They weren't being left out of conversations. It's just that the committee has conversations that are not public and that's the nature of it. So if I am elected, I'm hoping to bring a little bit of that feeling that people, people want to be heard. And so when they go to a school committee meeting and they are allowed to speak in the public comment kind of format, I think that they do feel heard to a certain extent, but also due to the nature of that, that very meeting, But also due to the nature of that very meeting, there's certain guidelines around people on the committee and their ability to respond or not. And so even though it's an excellent format and people have the opportunity to share their feelings in that meeting, the school committee members at that time might not have the opportunity to respond directly. So what I'm hoping in terms of my commitment to open communication with the public is to assure that I offer that monthly check-in for constituents who would like that opportunity to have a little bit more informal conversation back and forth to tell me how they're feeling about certain issues. So that then, as a school committee member, when you do go into the closed meetings, you're able to have that perspective. In terms of the communication with the administrators, I, I believe that something that the school committee used to do that I think would, that I do believe the pandemic might have curtailed this just a bit. But I know that before the pandemic, each school committee member was assigned to a specific school. And I think that would be a wonderful thing and very likely the school committee's planning to reincorporate that when schools are open fully again, hopefully in the fall. But I think it would be a really, a really important way to resume that communication, which is each school committee member being assigned to a specific school here in town and just giving one more layer to a nice, open communication.
All right, thanks very much. Okay, well, we're going to change direction here. And the following series of questions address the work being done at the district level by the Diversity and Equity Steering Committee. And there are three distinct questions here. And each has multiple parts, and some of the parts are overlap or, or maybe repetitive. But I'm going to ask them the way I'm going to ask them as they were submitted. And so I'm going to leave it at that. So question 14 goes to Amy. Okay, thank you, Cindy. And there are, I guess there are, there are three sort of subcategories to this question. So the question is, do the candidates support teaching critical race theory to our students? A, can they explain to the parents what critical race theory is and give their view on critical race theory? Part B, is it currently being taught in our school system? And what grade levels? And C, if it is being taught in our schools, what is the cost of the program?
Okay. Critical race theory is, was really born almost half a century ago as an academic movement. Critical race theory is something that I've, that I've studied a bit and that I have had questions on before. And one of the things that I would like to share is that one of my interpretations of critical race theory is that it really is focused on individuals' right and ability to tell their stories regardless and to share their stories from their perspective. So from listening to individuals in town that I've spoken with, people have concerns that the curriculum in our town is focusing in a way that is not representative of everybody's feelings and is not representative of who we are as a town. And so as it pertains to critical race theory, I would like to say that we are not teaching, we don't have a specific curriculum. We are not teaching from a standpoint of, of critical race theory per se. But what we are doing is we're providing an education to our students that is balanced, that is focused on inclusivity and openness and respect. We are incorporating pieces of curriculum, looking at, tied right to our district SMARTboards, tied right to, down to the choices that were, the curricular choices that we're making that address the, the changes that are happening in this world. The, the world is changing. East Long Meadow is changing with it. I think that as parents, we can all agree that we're, we are hoping and wishing to create, to, to have our children become a generation of, of critical thinkers and inclusive thinkers. We want to empower children with factual information, but also empower them with a compassion and give them all of the facts and information in terms of historical perspectives, et cetera, that is balanced and open, but also factual. And I do believe that the town is doing that right now. I've heard the term several times by people that they believe that they're, they're concerned right now that the town has incorporated a curriculum that is indoctrinating students with opinions that are really skewed in one direction or another. And, and I would argue that that is absolutely not the case. This town makes curricular decisions, decisions, difficult decisions that are, are moving in the direction of inclusivity and really looking at things through a lens of providing our students with that whole child approach, the balanced education that we know that we all want for our children. And Don, I'm not sure if I missed a part of that because there were several pieces, but I think I might have gotten it.
I think, I think so. Oh, so there was a question about the cost, if it is being taught. That was the third part. But I think you provided an answer to that.
I think I did too, thank you.
Sarah?
Sure, similarly, critical race theory is, is a theory that ascribes to looking at how laws and systems and policies are potentially impacted by race. And it ascribes to a system of beliefs that race is a man-made theory and that that's, that's kind of the crux of where critical race theory was born, as Amy alluded to years ago. I am in agreement with Amy that there is no critical race theory curriculum that's been purchased. I will clarify too that funding for the Diversity and Equity Subcommittee that exists is grant-funded. That's not, that's not something that is coming directly from the town's budget. So I just want to make that distinction that while that committee exists, it is not directly being funded by the town. So I just don't want that to be a misnomer that's out there. I think in terms of moving forward around critical race theory or, or conversations that are critical in nature in general, that there's, there's two things we really need to focus on. And one is we need to ensure that we have, have really supported our educators with being able to have conversations that are challenging, that are difficult, that are critical in nature and that, but so that they have a skillset that allows them to not allow their own opinion to infiltrate the conversation. Schools are meant to be places where students develop their own opinions and students are able to think and develop a skillset that allows them to eventually, like as the state says, be college, career, and civically responsible. And, you know, that is the state's goal. We want college preparedness, career preparedness, and we want people who are, to create students that are able to engage in society, to engage in civic responsibility. And if we're going to do that, then we need to be able to ensure that our educators are providing spaces where students are able to bring varying perspectives to the table and have those conversations without the infiltration of adults possibly swaying their, swaying their belief systems. We can provide texts, we can provide articles, we can provide a myriad of, of options for students to engage in, in critical and current conversations. But we need to ensure that our own biases as adults are not infiltrating those conversations. We need to do our due diligence by setting a context by which those conversations can be had. But ultimately, we need to allow the students to do the thinking and the students to be able to determine their own opinions based on what they're bringing from their home lives, based on what they're bringing from their family, family experiences, and, and all that students bring through our doors each day. I think the second layer that we need to really tackle over time, and I'm hoping as a member of the Diversity and Equity Committee that we'll, we'll get to this point, is that we need to also educate our community about what the conversations are that are happening within our schools and what conversations aren't. We really need to ensure that there is a broad understanding of what is and is not being done within, within each classroom and within each building. And that we need to really provide that in a transparent way, but in a way that educated, educates families as to, as to what is being discussed and how it's being discussed. So that's where I'll probably leave, I'll leave that for now.
All right, thank you. So the next question is, again, the same topic, submitted by parents of, of students, of students who are in the district. Please talk about your understanding of the experience of minority students and families directly in relation to the education setting in East Long Meadow. What are the top two things you would do to affect change as a member of the school committee?
So I think that that's really part of the work that Klee has, has helped the district to uncover. We did have our, our audit, and that was presented to the entire committee and to the general public. And I think when we, when we think about student needs and we think about our top priorities, I think the priority of any district always needs to be to ensure that individual student needs are being met. And we need to think about that in terms of meeting needs of our special education populations, meeting needs of our students of color, meeting the needs of our English language learners, and also meeting the needs of our, our regular education students. And, and that's a task for any district. But I think it's, it's really important that as we think about that, that we use approaches, which is what I was extremely grateful about and what is what I called out during that school committee meeting, that are research-based and, and are sound in terms of best practices. So ensuring that we are providing equitable educational opportunities that are targeting the individual needs of students. So no longer is it that we're all getting the same stools that we can see over the fence. We're really need to ensure that the heights of those stools are matched to the needs of each individual. So I think one of the, one of the policies we need to continue to look at is ensuring that we are meeting the needs of our IP, of students on IEPs in terms of services, in terms of resources, and that that is a population that we need to continue to ensure that we funnel appropriate funds to. But that we also need to hear the voices of some students who are maybe in underrepresented groups. And we need to continue to gather information and have focus groups and have conversations, which I know is one of the driving forces of the Diversity and Equity Committee, but also of the work that Klee is helping our district to conduct. So I think furthering the work that's already been established is one top priority in terms of Diversity and Equity Committee. But then also really thinking about populations like our special education and our ELL students to ensure that proper resourcing and staffing are in place so that we are meeting the needs of those students as best as possible.
Thank you. Amy?
Would you mind repeating that?
Not at all. Please talk about your understanding of the experience of minority students and families directly in relation to the education setting in East Long Meadow. What are the top two things you will do to affect change as a member of the school committee?
So my direct experience as a member of the minority, of a minority community is that in East Long Meadow, I don't have that experience. I'm not living the experience of an individual who, who falls into that category of, of, of minority in terms of whether it be race or otherwise. So this question for me really comes from the heart because for me, I have dedicated my life's work to serving underserved populations. In my, in my daily life and living, in the work that I do every single day, I strive to respect, empower, and educate students who are often coming from those marginalized backgrounds, lower socioeconomic groups, racial minority groups. And so this is the work that I do every single day. So I don't have the lived experience, but what I am doing is I'm listening. I'm listening to families that are talking to me about this. I have spoken to several people over the past several months who have asked me questions similar to this. And the bottom line is, the demographics in this town are changing. And we have the, you know, the, the committee that is informing us and providing us with data and giving us great information about how we can move forward in a positive and productive way. But the bottom line is, we all need to get on board. We need to get on board as a community and we need to open up our, our hearts and open up our minds and understand that the community is diversifying in the absolute most beautiful way. It's diversifying in an absolutely beautiful way. And it's up to us to respond to that. So we need to look at, as the Equity Audit kind of spoke to, we need to look at our hiring practices. All of the research indicates that students learn very effectively when they're being taught by somebody that looks like them. So looking at our hiring practices here in town is going to be of utmost importance. As Sarah mentioned, providing safe spaces for individuals who are from a minority population where we're really hearing them. Maybe not necessarily just a survey where we're asking them, you know, in that, in an impersonal way. Obviously, that's, we need to collect data as well. But a face-to-face support groups or groups of allies that were really, as a town, committed to developing both at the faculty level, opening it up to, you know, the, the student experience, but also the teacher experience and the broader community.
All right. Thank you very much. So the third and final question of this group is also about the experience of students and parents in the district. And it comes, and in this case, I'm going to say from Pastor John Chase of the New Life Church, who asked, particularly that we give his name when we pose this question. "As a father of a mixed-race family here in town, I have watched my sons, who are in fourth grade, endure racial slurs and racial insults every year in school. The response of the school board and Equity Committee has been, in my mind, very weak when it came to addressing this ugly undercurrent issue in our schools. Since it exists and due to the fact that parents like me will not be silent anymore, what will you, as a school board member, pledge to do to address the issue of racism and racial equity in our schools? And will you commit to reaching out to the mixed-race families in our town to get our input into the issue? And how will you do that?" So Amy, that goes right back to you.
Yeah, I think everybody watching, everybody certainly watching this call can agree that that is a heartbreaking thing to hear. I know everybody who, who just heard that information, we can all agree that that should never happen. That should absolutely never happen to a family, a child, anywhere. Okay, so we can start by saying that. We, we all know that and we can agree on that. So the question really pertains to actionable things that an individual serving on a committee can do to assure that these types of things don't happen anymore. So the number one thing is listening and providing a space for families who choose to participate, whether it be they are identifying with, they're identifying in a, in a marginalized group of any kind, providing them with that safe space, with that community to be able to feel safe and to be able to share with not just the, not just the committee members, but also members of the broader community, what their experience is. So I think just hearing this question today, it's informing me of something that I didn't know about, right? So we all need to hear these stories. We need to hear when these things are happening. Hopefully, by opening up a more, by opening up a dialogue about this, we, we can preempt some of these things. What we really need to do is provide our children with opportunities to understand a more inclusive picture. We need to make sure that our, that the curriculum that we're purchasing, obviously, every several years, there's, there's curricular changes, perhaps at different grade levels. We need to make sure that we are approaching that through a lens of equity and being very measured and very intentional about that. So to answer this question, I think that providing the space and the respectful, not just hearing it, but listening, listening to people's experiences and then acting accordingly going forward, I think is critical. I absolutely believe that in that case, there, there should be some ramifications for individuals that are using that language. And so that's another thing to think about as well as we move forward and how to support families that are feeling the ramifications of what, of what that question stated.
All right, thank you.
So I will echo what, what Amy just said in terms of that, that being a troubling revelation that has come to light for me right now and to, to offer that that should not happen and we should not be a community that allows racial slurs or, or any kind of, anything that is going to be disparaging to be said to any students. Schools should be safe spaces, they should be havens. anything, um, that is going to be disparaging to be said to any students. Schools should be safe spaces. They should be havens and beacons where kids feel like they can be who they are and can really trust that the educators and the students that surround them are there to help them be the best possible version of themselves. So in that case, I do, I do apologize on behalf of the district because that should not have occurred. And, um, you know, I think when you, when I think about moving forward, we do have policies in place and we do have measures in place. And if those safeguards aren't working and if lines of communication aren't working, then we need to know. And, and that's where we as a committee can intervene. I can say that over this past year, families have reached out, not necessarily in terms of, of, of matters of race, but in terms of, um, concerns around, around expectations of, of our district not necessarily being met or distrust starting to form because those expectations have not been met. And there have been times when I have been asked by members of the community to sit in on conversations so that we are able to reestablish those, um, lines of trust. We're able to establish a belief that our school district is doing everything in its power to allow students to thrive. And I will put that out there for everyone right now. I, I have done that for individuals who have, who have come to me and who have had that conversation. I think in terms of, of making phone calls and, and, and that kind of work, I think that becomes an extremely delicate situation because we don't want any individuals in our community to feel as though they're being targeted, um, for those types of conversations or outreach. Um, because we, we don't want, we don't want that to become, come what the perception is. But, um, I have, have tried to make myself, um, as available as possible. Um, anytime a member of the community has asked me to sit on a, a conversation, even just to listen and be a set of eyes and ears that can take notes and offer guidance and then act afterwards if need be, I've done that for them. And I make that commitment to you too, um, Pastor John. Um, and I am regrettable that I did not know about this, but I do offer that apology and, um, commit to continuing to work with you, um, if able, as we move forward because, um, I think that's important because in, in the line of that conversation, there's a child. Um, and we need to ensure that that child's experiences within our broader community, community, but specifically when in our public school community are everything they need to be to ensure that they are meeting with success and able to actualize their potential in a safe and respectful environment.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. Okay, so, uh, we're down to question seventeen, the final question. And this is about assessing the impact of the pandemic where we are now. And we've talked about this, you've both touched on this to some extent. Uh, but the question is, what do you think are the biggest challenges for East Long Meadow students after 10 months of remote learning? What specific strategies will you endorse to ensure that any deficits, both academic and social, emotional are addressed and corrected?
So I think one of, one of the major concerns is re-engaging, re-engaging our students, um, in school, both socially and academically. I think we're going to need to continue to look at data, whether that be coming from the MCAS or iReady data or, um, you know, the myriad of, of data points that we have for our students, as well as our social emotional data, which is coming from, from the surveys that our students participate in. And I think when we start to look at the broader picture of what is coming back into our buildings, then we need to start to adjust our practices to ensure that we successfully re-engage students. And we need to ensure that we are providing the proper resources, whether that's staff, that's one of the priorities that I know the superintendent and the leadership teams and the entire school committee is really trying to prioritize, even with tough budgets. We want to see more adjustment counselors coming into the schools so that we can better accept what our students are bringing forward to us and we can service them in the ways that they deserve to be serviced. Or if that comes in the form of materials, ensuring that we have the best software that's going to help personalize instruction or ensuring that we have the most up-to-date curricular resources that are going to address learning loss on that may have happened or unfinished learning that may have happened during the last 10 months. I think another key aspect of that is professional development for our educators. You know, they need to really be informed as to how to socially and emotionally support students. Um, what should they be engaging kids in, in terms of conversation? How should those conversations sound? What should they be looking for in terms of red flags or concerns that maybe they haven't seen in their career as an educator? Because this has shifted the landscape of education and we need to ensure that we're providing our educators with professional development and tools that allow them to adjust to that landscape. And also they need to have more than ever, an understanding of the standards our students, um, learned before the grade level that they're current in, so that's that vertical progression. Because as students come with, um, learning loss or unfinished learning, if our educators are not acutely aware, if they're not, um, really, really aware of the previous grade level, it's going to become increasingly difficult to provide quality interventions to students to shore up those gaps, to ensure that we're moving forward with current content while at the same time layering in levels of remediation as necessary based on data. I think some of the resources we have that we can utilize for this are continuing to advocate for that budget, continuing to work alongside the town council to ensure that we have the funds and then successfully expending the ESSR funds that we are getting at the federal and state level so that we're actualizing those items that I just discussed. I think we need to continue to look critically at the extended year options that both our special education department and our director of curriculum and instruction have been putting forth. We need to encourage families to take advantage of those so that students are re-engaging and re-acclimating into the school community. And I do think we need to continue to look at our school calendar so that we're maximizing instruction, ensuring professional development is embedded, but that we're not going to accept as a community that after 10 months of missed opportunities in, in educational experiences, that we're not going to accept as a community losing five instructional days going forward into next year. That has to be paramount. And it has to be weighing on our decision-making as we think about how we can control something. We control that calendar. We have the, the insight into how that will impact the amount of minutes our students have within our buildings. And I think we need to think about that in light of the past 10 months. And then we need to really all rally around ensuring that the next academic year really allows students to meet with success, both in terms of their social, their social engagements in the building, but their academic ones as well.
Could I hear the specific question one more time, please?
There we go. Okay. What do you think are the biggest challenges for East Long Meadow students after 10 months of remote learning? What specific strategies will you endorse to ensure that any deficits, both academic and social, emotional are addressed and corrected?
So I think of this as learning gaps, not learning loss. Because I think that the implications of saying learning loss, and I know there's all sorts of different ways that we're referring to things, and this is just verbiage, but for me, it's important that we send the message to our students. If, there's nothing that you could have done, right? There's nothing that you could have done about this and, and to parents too. So as educators, ta, taking on that burden, obviously we're a community and we're working together with parents and families and other community members to get, to get children back up, um, to where they, to, to where they need to be in terms of that grade level. But the gaps that I believe are going to be, um, informing instruction are not necessarily the loss. Obviously, we need to assess where our students are right now. But, um, to speak to Sarah's point, I do believe that professional development is going to be a huge piece of this because in my opinion, what we're going to be seeing now is the gap that the teachers are seeing in the classroom maybe used to be like this. So you had a child who was on this end and a child who was maybe on this end and then children everywhere in between. And now what has, um, happened is that gap has widened. And so what we need to do is we need to make sure that we're providing those professional development opportunities for our teachers. To help our students reincorporate themselves back into their academics and to do that as effectively as possible. We have some excellent, um, programs and software that this town has invested in, some of that adaptive software that we all, um, and, and internet-based things that we all, you know, see our children coming home with. Um, that's adaptive. That tells the teachers exactly where the child is and, and provides information about how the teacher can meet that child exactly where they are. So to me, that's the academic side of things and just being really intentional about assuring that we are providing professional development opportunities for teachers to be able to understand how to better address all of the needs that are in that gap that has widened a bit with the pandemic and also keeping up that positivity for our students. This wasn't your fault. You did nothing wrong. You did the absolute best you could. And now here we are as your teachers, your principals, your family, and we're here to support you. We're here to get you back up exactly where you need to be. Um, and the same thing goes on the social, emotional side. Um, we've all seen, many of us are our own children who have really suffered. They've really suffered and this has been a devastatingly difficult year for so many people, adults and children alike. And so making that commitment, um, as was mentioned, to the, the staffing, um, that we, that we need to provide. We need to make sure that students have the opportunities to engage with those adjustment counselors, to be put into social support groups if necessary. So for me, it's a, it's obviously, it's twofold and it's really meeting our students where they are at right now, providing the support for them and the teachers and telling everybody, it's going to be okay. We're going to get back where we need to be. We're using information that has been garnered every day through our, um, through our data gathering, um, assessment tools and it's going to improve going forward. You're muted, Don.
I'm not good at this. Um, thank you. We made it through the questions. Thank you both. And thank you to the people, uh, who sent the questions in. Um, I think they certainly do represent a a broad perspective of, uh, opinions and viewpoints by town residents and, um, and I think you did a, a great job taking the time to give, uh, thoughtful and responsive answers. So now we go to the closing statements and based on the coin toss at the beginning, uh, Sarah will do her closing statement first. And we'll try to keep these to, uh, a minute if we can. Thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I want to take a moment and say thank you again for taking the time to listen and participate this evening, um, as a community. I remain grounded in the belief that the decisions I have made, um, and will continue to make are in the best interest of students. I hope that tonight I was able to share the collective accomplishments of East Long Meadow Public Schools, my vision for the future and the ways in which I've demonstrated my leadership and ability to act when called upon. The knowledge and experience that I've been able to bring to the table the past three years and will hope to continue to bring forward if re-elected will ensure that we have a steady hand at the helm as we continue to navigate educational experiences like no others. I have listened to the community over the past three years and have engaged with multiple departments and constituents, all in pursuit of what is best for students. These conversations, data and our budget have grounded the decisions that I have made over the past three years. As always, I encourage you to reach out to me, whether it's via Facebook, my phone number, email, and I humbly ask you for your vote on June eighth. Thank you and good evening.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, Amy?
East Long Meadow, I hope that this evening I have demonstrated to you that I can be trusted with the enormous responsibility of serving on your school committee. My expertise in the field of education will serve as my foundation. My leadership skills, professional competence and compassion for others will allow me to fulfill the duties of this role with the kind of collaboration and communication that leads to positive results for all of our children. Our small town, along with so many other communities in this country, is entering a time of transition and transformation. The school committee will benefit from a new perspective and a more transparent approach. I am someone who is a thoughtful, measured advocate during a time where decisions are complicated and opinions may be divided. I am a strong leader that is skilled at negotiating with many different viewpoints to work towards a common goal. I will bring this skillset to the school committee. People care so deeply about this committee because it directly relates to the most precious people among us, our children. I am someone who will consider the unique needs of each and every child in this town and always keep them at the center of the conversation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And, and again, thank you both. Uh, that concludes this candidate's forum. Remind people that the town election is Tuesday, June eighth. Um, and I'm going to note here, uh, that the forum that had been planned for the town council candidates to follow this one on May 27th will not take place. Um, there was a general, either a lack of availability or interest on the part of, uh, some candidates and the public. So, uh, it doesn't warrant trying to plan that event. But I am very grateful for this one to everybody involved. I want to thank, uh, Cindy Knowles, who's been here sort of from the beginning and offered to help me get this organized. I didn't really know what I was getting into. But I think it has been a tremendous opportunity for the community. So, uh, thanks to Cindy. Uh, and also the incomparable Jamie Rook, making sure that this gets recorded and sent out so that people could actually watch it. Couldn't do it without Jamie. So thanks again to you, Amy and Sarah for agreeing to participate. I think it really was very informative, a great discussion on behalf of the community and the voters. So, thank you. And, uh, to all of you at home, um, thanks again and good night.